All right, we'll go ahead and get started. I call to order the city council work session for May 21st, 2018 at 6:30 PM. We're here to discuss charter amendments to city elections and municipal code amendment recommendations. Tammy, could you please call the roll?
Counselor Milch?
Here.
Oh, 22nd, excuse me. I'm sorry. Today's kind of messed together. Anyway, go ahead.
Counselor Neath?
Present.
Counselor Tracy?
Present.
Counselor Reisner?
Here.
Counselor McMahon?
Here.
Counselor Mercero?
Here.
Mayor Stimple?
Here. Could everyone please stand for the pledge of leaders?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And because this is a work session, it's informal. We're not going to have business from the audience. We're just going to have an open discussion up here between council, staff, and committee members that have relevant information. So, the first item is charter amendments to city elections. This was brought back a couple of months ago, and we decided to relook at the language and then come back in May and discuss it. So, would someone like to start?
Well, my name's on it, so I guess I will.
Okay.
So, I really don't have anything else to add from back in February. I think that, and still do, that we should get away from appointing new members and allow the citizens to elect them, elect us and future members, even if somebody resigns to fill a position. And that's what I've offered up. And there was some discussion, and thought we should come back and discuss it some more. So, I guess that's...
So, why do you feel that way?
So, well, all but two of us were, well, I'd say all but three have been appointed at one time or another. And our democracy works in regards to our voters at all levels, electing their officials.
So, at least seven cities that I've got charters for, all of them?
Right. Well, if that's what, you know, I think we should change it. Feel free to move to one of those cities if you want them to be appointed.
Well, we have Chad here, who is kind of the city charter guru. Would you like to weigh in a little bit on this and maybe give some history and...
Sure. Members of the council, for the record, Chad Jacobs from the city attorney's office. So, this is one of those quintessential areas of home rule authority. As you may recall, under the Oregon Constitution, cities have the authority to adopt home rule charters. With the home rule charter, one of the areas that we have the ability to do whatever we want regardless of what the state says is in the form of our government. And in that form of government, we can say how many councils we have, what type of counselors, what powers they'll have. Basically, we're going to have a city manager form of government, a strong mayor form of government, all these different variations we have the authority to do, which is why you see so many different kinds of governments across Oregon. One of those things that we have the ability to do is dictate how counselors are either appointed or elected to office when a vacancy like this occurs. So, there is not necessarily a right or wrong answer. The majority, as based on my knowledge, the majority of jurisdictions either have a straight-up appointment or some sort of hybrid version of an appointment in an election. The reason why you at least have the hybrid version in most jurisdictions is because they don't want a long gap of time between the period of a vacancy occurring and when that seat is filled. So, for example, under state law and as proposed in this charter amendment, we can't have an election if a vacancy occurs less than 90 days before an election. If that were to occur, you'd have to wait, so if a vacancy occurs 88 days before the election, you have to wait those 88 days plus the additional three months until the following election. So, you're talking about a six-month time period where there'll be a vacancy. So, what a lot of jurisdictions do is they have a hybrid portion where they'll appoint an interim person, and then they'll have an election to fulfill the remainder of the term. There's also something that many jurisdictions do in that they look at how much time is left in the term to determine whether or not they want to actually have, require an election. So, for an example, if the next election is going to be the November before the term ends, most jurisdictions say it's not really worth it to have someone run for an election in November when that seat's going to be up for reelection at that point in time anyways. So, you'll basically be voting on that seat twice, one to fulfill the last two months of the term and another to fulfill the next term. So, there's a whole, the long and short of it is, is there's a lot of variations. You've got a lot of ability to sort of do what you think is best. Of course, whatever you decide is going to have to be approved by the voter since this is a charter amendment. But the majority of jurisdictions either have a straight-up appointment or some sort of hybrid process. Happy to answer any additional questions if I didn't cover anything.
So, the worst-case scenario is of what, six months?
Yeah. If someone, you know, vacated the seat 89 days before an election, you'd basically have to wait those three months...
What's the three months?
Plus the additional three months to the next election. Yeah.
Okay. We also have some, I think, who all here was on the charter amendment committee?
My client.
Okay. So, was this something that you guys discussed in length, was this piece of it?
Yep. I've even got a couple. What did you say, Neil?
Yeah. We had great discussion on it, long lengthy.
Okay.
And we had some good people that was on that charter committee, and we've not seen a lot of those people that was really involved.
Okay. Mindy, do you want to come up just in case? Do you want to get in the discussion since you were part of the original go-around?
Yes.
Sorry to put you on the spot.
I've, Mindy Garland's been here. I've just often said that I felt like we did a lot of good work on this, and it was really sad that the whole thing kind of got dropped just because it didn't get passed because there was a lot of really good work in here. And it, believe me, it wasn't me by any means. We had a lot of people that came in and talked about different portions of what we did, and I think that it's, quite frankly, we could take two things out and throw it back at the voters, but that's just...
And I appreciate your comments because we spent five months on this.
Yes.
January, weekly, I think.
Why I kept it. There's no reason to drop the ball on this at all.
I was going to ask for clarification. This, Mindy, when we're talking about this, what exactly? I mean, it sounds like it's comprehensive, like all of it, or...
Well, we lived through the whole charter line by line, and even if some of these people weren't on the committee, every meeting we had, we had different folks dropping in and just listening to the part portions that we worked on that week. We had people come from the something, of something...
The League of Oregon Cities.
Yeah. Those people, they came and talked to us about a couple of things. And, you know, we had other people that just came in and chimed in on one portion of it. But I have notes for everything that we did, and...
We changed a lot of words, Matt, like shall and we, and, I mean, there was, I mean, we scrutinized every word through it.
On this particular issue, the elections and filling of vacancies, as I recall, you came up with sort of a hybrid approach.
Correct.
An appointment, and then you had timing that sort of dictated, or set timing sequences that dictated when you would have an election.
Correct.
So, but, but the problem, I think, in doing a comprehensive changing of the charter was, for the voters, it was you take it all or you leave it all.
Correct.
And you could, they didn't have an opportunity to vote on different sections.
Correct.
So, if there were two or three sections that really bothered people, perhaps what Mindy says is true. If those more controversial sections hadn't been there, maybe everybody was overwhelmingly in favor of the rest, but voted it down because they didn't like parts of it.
Yeah.
And I don't think it's much point in trying to identify what those parts were.
No. And you're correct in what you're saying.
I didn't hear a lot of people, during the discussion before the election, I didn't hear a lot of people saying we should vote this down because of the way it handles filling appointments.
No.
No, it was about the...
And the city manager.
City manager issues.
Yeah.
And one other thing, what was the other theme, Neil? You were a pretty big proponent about it.
The city council. Shoot, I'm trying to think of how, it was regarding city council members.
Okay. Okay. So, what we have here is your version. It's not what the council, what the committee came up with.
Sorry. It is, looks like section 33, is that right, Neil?
Yeah. True.
About 33, but it's that section 8 and section 29 both are verbatim out of the...
Proposed.
Proposed.
Okay. So, the last section's the only one that's changed significantly.
I've got the exact wording, I believe. At the charter committee.
Okay. So, do you want to...
Counselor Gray.
Okay. Do you want to read that to us so that we get a better idea of what they came up with? What you're bringing up there?
Section 31 vacancies, the mayor or council office becomes vacant, it's the mayor.
We're not changing that. 31 wasn't being changed. It was 33 that was being changed.
That's correct, but the number changed in the proposed that they presented, because there was a lot of things changed in the charters, the numbers just changed.
All right. That's right.
And the number on that one, of which the current one is now still 33, okay?
Okay.
But in this case, it was called section 31.
Okay.
Upon the incumbent's death, adjudicated incompetence or recall from the office, that was A, B, upon declaration of the council after the incumbent's failure to qualify for the office within 10 days' time, blah, blah, blah. Now, I can go down through that. That's not part of this.
No, that's just qualifying what a vacancy means.
To filling the vacancies, which was in section 32, a mayor or council vacancy will be filled as follows. A, if less than 17 months remain in the term of the person who held the vacant office, the vacancy shall be filled by appointment, by a majority vote of the remaining council members, appointee shall serve the remainder of the unexpired term.
Oh, not till the next election. Okay.
If more than 17 months remain in the term of the person who held the vacant office, the vacancy shall be filled at the next available November election. The person elected shall serve the remainder of the unexpired term. A majority of the remaining council members must fill the vacancy by appointment for an interim period until the special election may be held to fill the remainder of the unexpired term.
Can I add one thing to that real quick? One of the things that we talked about in length, if you'll remember, is the cost that it, if Gladstone had to put someone, put people on a ballot on an off-season and nothing else was running, then it falls back onto the city of Gladstone to pay for that. And that group of people in there were very conscious about the fact that we did not want to have to cost the city, what did we say, $5,000 or $10,000 to do something like that? It was an exorbitant amount.
It was about five.
Is it?
It was over that.
Yeah. And I think that was one of the big things, is to avoid that cost right there when talking about filling a vacancy. So, that's where those numbers came up. And we, we talked about them at great length based on the, we looked at calendars and what it would take for, remember, I don't remember how all that worked, but somebody worked it out.
I remember Mindy having a big part of that discussion. She didn't want to spend money.
Not Mindy.
She didn't want to spend money. I wasn't the only one. There were all the people that didn't want to spend the money.
That's true. That was a big part of the discussion.
Yeah.
And former counselor Johnson talked at great length about, it takes more than you think to get people to agree to even run for these positions. So, that was something that was always weighing in the back of our minds, you know? It's not like you just get people that step up to the plate to do this. It takes a lot of thought. It takes knowing that you're going to give up. And so, with that, we felt like if you could get somebody in there, why dump them back out?
Any more discussion? Comments?
I think my comment's going to be, I'm assuming that Counselor Reisner is looking for election process because he feels that the appointment process doesn't qualify for giving the citizens their voice.
Well said, yeah.
Okay. So, I understand that part of it. I also understand, though, that I think the appointment process is part of what might be needed here is I think that as we're, I think we're going through kind of a healing process in this city. My limited time here on the council, you show me, and the citizens will reach out to me, you show me that we're kind of in a process where we're driving forward and trying to be positive and going in the right direction. Personally, I think I understand what your, what your intentions, Counselor Reiser. I don't think this is necessarily the pathway to it. And by that, I mean, I think that if the citizens feel comfortable with their elected body, they will also feel comfortable with that elected body choosing somebody to be on that council. And we have enough election cycles and the way that this particular council's election cycles work, that I think that we're really kind of in those two-year cycles. It doesn't seem to me like we're taking a great risk or that fellow citizens' voices are not heard yet. I just, I just want to say that. Because I think that other cities have found this to be functional for a lot of different reasons. And one of the things that we're, we're faced with in, in politics is recalls, you know, not being satisfied with the way a counselor or an elected official behaves, acts otherwise. And we're changing the election process, you know? Remember, the old days, so to speak, was you were elected into the position, you performed at whatever level, you were the voice of the people, or you were the opposing voice of some folks, right? You either won the seat again or you lost the seat very suddenly. I don't think that the appointment process, because we are voicing citizens' concerns, I don't think the appointment process is a threat to that process. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
We have those two-year cycles. If this was six-year terms or what have you, I would say, then there's probably more of a risk there. I don't think it is, as long as we're cycling through every two to four years. And that's, that's how I feel about it. I still think the citizens, we've watched the citizens that rely on you for their voice. If they're not satisfied, then I think it's incumbent on you, me, and others to get together with those citizens to work with them so that they understand the elected body is really trying to work for them. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
I'm just, that's my question.
Yes.
The last time we spoke about this, I had, I made the comment that I thought that what had been proposed to the charter was probably preferable to trying to do the elections very quickly. And that, first of all, having, having a vacancy while you're waiting for an election would be a detriment to the process that the council operates on. I think, I think we should try to fill the appointments as quickly as we can, or fill the vacancies as quickly as we can. And then, I think what Mindy brought up and what was discussed by the committee earlier, the shorter the amount of time you have to think about running for election, because the election is coming up out of the normal cycle, I think it is limiting as, as to the number of people in the community you might be able to take to participate in it. And so, I think maintaining kind of a consistent process, there will always be, unfortunately, someone could die, someone could be recalled, I hope we don't see too many of those anymore, or someone could leave, you know, resign for personal reasons. So, we've seen enough appointments in recent years that we know that they, that they happen frequently. But I think, you made, Counselor Tracy makes a good point. Trying to stick to a schedule of elections that are basically only two years apart would be my preference. And appointing in the interim as quickly as possible. If, if a vacancy occurred very early in a term and there were still three or four years left, then I would say do something similar to what the charter committee recommended, is have somebody fill the appointment up until the interim election, and then, and then have an election for the remaining two years.
Counselor McMahon?
I, yeah, I have a doubt with using what Counselor Reiser has started and then using the section 32 from the, we might have to do it back in 2016 instead. And then, we could at least change a couple things in the, in this charter.
Start hitting it.
Counselor Reiser, would you be amendable to that, or do you want only...
No, I'm not steadfast in...
Would you accept what the, what the committee...
I didn't, I don't have that. That was 32, right?
And you were at all meetings, Neil, because of your schooling and teaching, so you knew quite a few of them.
True. Yeah. No, you know, you know, no, that looks good.
Counselor McMahon, which section of, what are you talking about?
Section 32.
Section 32. Now, this is not something we can change as a council.
Right.
We would have to recommend it as a, as an initiative, or not an initiative, but a ballot measure for the citizens.
Yes. We have to go and have a public hearing for it before we can move forward with it.
Which was, something that's already been mentioned tonight, that I think one of the reasons why it failed was it was, as mentioned, all or nothing.
Yeah.
So, I think if we break it up into chunks and have a chunk this, this November, and then again in a couple of years, maybe another, another chunk kind of thing to, to spread it out and make it more, you know...
Every couple of years?
I don't know.
I need to put something on twice a year. We need to get through that.
Well, I know, but, but then we're talking special election.
No, I mean, regular elections, though.
Right. Right. Well, the next regular election...
Is November.
For this year.
Right. Don't we have anything in May?
It's a parody, I think.
Okay. So, it's the next May.
Yeah.
All right. Well, then what happens, November?
Yeah. So...
So, why can't you just take out the two parts you don't like and throw them back at the voters?
The whole thing?
Yeah. There's only two things people didn't like.
So, that's my view.
Do we know that for sure? Because do we want to risk...
Well, Neil, how did that up? I mean, I'm not trying to throw you under the bus, but here's the buzz.
It's all Mindy.
I don't want to comment on the eloquence of that.
It's all Mindy, but...
So, true.
Am I wrong?
Okay. I mean, if we...
You guys spent a lot of time, and I think it was just for the, if there was just the two issues, that maybe that might be a better way to do it, and then have all your work not be for not, just be two years further out, then it won't be adjusted.
I agree with that.
Okay. So...
Could Neil get back to us by next council meeting or something with what, what you remember being the couple of sticking points on the charter changes?
So, we can boot those out?
I could, I could look into, into that. I might have to get copies because I might have recycled them.
Did we pass them out at the...
Mindy's got them. She's got them. Color-coded and gray.
If all sells, I can sit down with Mindy and...
At the 2016 town hall meeting, we passed out copies of the charter because, as I recall, the voter pamphlet didn't include all the language. You had to find it by reference to something else.
Going online.
Too long ago. But they were printed up on brown paper, as I recall, and Tammy, you may still have copies or have, or be able to print them, at least for the council to look at.
Yeah. Well, I know they're available.
Other than the web station. That's where I got to this. Yeah. One issue...
I know one of them was giving powers to the city administrator.
Right.
That was a biggie.
Right.
And...
The other one was removing, now that, you know, we've been talking, removing city counselors.
Well, for felon, or not felonies, but for misdemeanors or something, right? Wasn't there something that...
Oh, it was something, something.
How is that even a special one?
Okay. So, what I'm hearing from a couple people, not all of you, is to have you come back at, do you have enough time at the next meeting, or should we look at it in July?
Probably July would be better. Well, that would be, yeah, that would still be...
That has to tell August.
August, to get it on the November ballot.
Well, that does make it a lot of time.
Well, or end of, or end of, how about, how about the end of June meeting?
End of June, the second June work session.
Which would be like the 26th.
Which, I thought, is that one still moving forward, or was that going to be canceled? For some reason, I thought the second meeting in June was canceled. Two sticking issues. I don't have the calendar. Is that June 19? Um, no, it'd be June 26.
No. Twenty, yeah.
June 26. Well, let's just tentatively say June 26.
Okay. That'd be a month.
And if you can, if you can get it to us beforehand...
Oh, sure.
So, that we have plenty of time to look at it...
Right.
And absorb it.
Yeah. So, I'll get it to Jackie so she can get it out to everybody.
And you were part of that.
Correct.
So, Chad, okay.
So, are you wanting the staff to send you the complete information that was sent out prior to, for all of you to review, prior to...
Yes. If you could send us, everybody, as soon as possible, within the next week, if possible, I know there's a holiday in there, the proposed charter amendment in its entirety so that we can look at it, and then maybe you can send us an email specifying which ones were the sticking points so that we know for sure what to look at. And then, we'll bring it back the 26th of June at that work session and decide, not decide, but discuss what our next step is. Okay? Does that sound okay for you guys?
It's Calper, Calper Reiser, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
Would you adopt the present language, or would you want to modify my question to, to the point that you brought up this evening about the elections?
No, I'm okay with...
You would adopt that?
Yeah, with what?
With the charter...
Charter, yeah.
...came up.
Yeah. I mean, I, I still think that a year and a half's quite a long time, but, but, you know, I'm flexible. I mean, I'm, you know, I'll be glad to, someone that isn't, isn't able to be worked with.
Thank you.
Okay. So, are we okay? Counselor McMahon?
Yes.
Counselor Milch?
Yes.
Counselor Reisner?
Very good.
Counselor Tracy?
Yes.
Counselor Mercero?
Yes.
Counselor Neath? Can I say yes?
I would like to bring up one other item.
Yes. Thank you, Mindy.
Thank you. I'm not sure how connected it is, yet it is partially connected. Now, it's been since '84, I believe, that the counselors, one, two, or one, three, and five, are elected one session, the even number are elected another section. But the mayor is also elected on the odd counselors, which leaves, I believe, I've always felt is an unfair advantage to somebody specifically on the even number because they can run for a mayor job and not have any risk.
Yeah, and not lose their seat. Yep.
Anyway, I think that needs to be somehow what we do to this, but...
And as I recall, that was the one that they tried to remedy by changing the mayor election to every two years instead of, instead of every four years. And then, we gave the citizens the option of rejecting just that one part of the comprehensive charter change.
I believe it was something like that.
Yeah.
Yeah. And it's, no, it's kind of the four years.
To me, the, those are, parts are connected and should be considered together, right?
Well, let's think about it, and then we can come together on June 26th and see if there's another way to do that. All right? Okay. Next item is municipal code amendment recommendations. Police Chief Jeff Jolly.
Thank you, Your Honor. I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. Just going back a little bit of history regarding this proposal, and I'm taking a little bit from page two, tac three. This initiative started as a result of the two thousand sixteen town hall, working with some citizens from the Charlaye neighborhood and the Spring Hill neighborhood, getting input from councilors at the time, and there was a strong feeling in the community that several of our municipal codes needed to be changed. The city council and the city administrator at the time directed us, as a police department, to come up with some model ordinances that would help address the main concerns that were brought forth, and that's where we're at today. This originally went to the council, and subsequently was sent over to the planning commission. Myself and community service officer Sean Boyle set before the planning commission on the seventeenth of April and discussed this. All of these items are outlined, I believe, in red and underlined in your book. I don't have a colored copy, so I'm assuming that you guys do. And I repeat this history. It's also noted in the minutes of the planning commission, only because there's an alternate dialogue going out there that somehow this is a police department-initiated effort, that we make laws. And if I remember from my Sesame Street days, and Conjunction Junction, and how a bill becomes law, the police department does not make the laws. We're here to assist the citizens with increased and enhanced livability, but you all make the laws, and you, as a body, directed us to come up with this body of work. So with that said, we have no stance on these proposals. These are model codes that several of us worked on and found from adjoining agencies, or as far down as Kaiser. Two have been passed already, I believe graffiti, and I want to say it's public drinking. A third one, the vacant homes, was pulled at the planning commission because O R S law has changed. So that's going to entail Chad, and somebody with extra initials after their name, to be able to dig down into that. So before you, you have three, that if you have questions, or any concerns, I don't know if you want to go through these, Your Honor. The only ones that we spoke to are the ones that are underlined in red. That you have in your packet, and those are the changes that were discussed and vetted, and these have been changed over a course of a year and a half. Several people, several bodies with input, so.
Okay, well, I think we should look at it by chapter, the first one being nuisances. Does anybody have any questions or concerns?
So the first one that I have is the vehicle storage on private property. My first question, I guess, I talked about a vehicle being allowed to be stored on private property provided it has a current valid license or registration. So, there's, I've already looked at a little, just a real wandering around in the delica, and so like on, near the driveway, with three cars in it. And the car furthest, closest to the garage, looks like it hasn't moved in a long time, and I think it didn't have, my guess is, we'll just say it doesn't have, currently is not licensed or registered, or licensed, but still registered to the homeowner, but he hasn't renewed it, per se, so he doesn't have current tanks.
Correct.
Is that a citable offense?
So, short answer is yes. And what, this is, the objective of this particular change was to keep cars off the front grass, to keep cars with engines off the road, and storage of junk cars that aren't moving. So what I would envision under a circumstance like this is code officer, an officer would go out to that location, talk to the homeowner, ascertain if this is a vehicle that's being worked on, a project car, or actively being engaged in as a project car, and if not, what its status was. If it's just sitting there occupying space, then in essence, it's considered junk.
So is the parking, the parking strip is considered public property, so there's a, between Arlington and Berkeley, on what has to be Barton, I believe, so the third street down. There's about four or five cars all parked on the parking strip. Is that already a citable offense, if it's not, if they aren't currently registered and licensed? Or is this something that will take care of that, or should?
That would, this would take care of that, as well as there's a subsequent addition or change here regarding registration of vehicles being parked on the street, so.
So if someone has a car, and it's parked on their property, in their yard, and say, in the back, and there's like four cars lined up, is that, and they're not running or moving, so is that a violation?
It could be considered junk, and they would be taught to by the code officer, an assessment would be done, a warning would be given, if warranted, and there would be attempts to remediate the situation and take care of it without writing a citation. That's never the first option. It's usually verbal warnings, written warnings, and so forth.
But as I read this, the exceptions of A through E on this one, which is on page two dash sixteen, as long as it was registered currently, if it was in the backyard, it would probably not be a hazard, wouldn't restrict vision, wouldn't obstruct the view, and could be parked on some kind of a driveway, well, I don't know, you wouldn't normally have, I guess, I guess if you had a concrete pad in your backyard to store your car on. So, would that be a case where, if they brought it up to registration, if they brought the registration up, then, and parked it in the backyard, where it wasn't?
If it's not blocking the view, it's not visible, it's on private property, it's out of the view, where we can't see it from a public area viewing into a private area, there's less likely chance there'll be any kind of a violation.
All right, that's helpful. The people aren't, you know, they don't have to just get rid of the car, they have, the backyard is always an option.
Correct, and just to give you a couple of examples, you can what-if this to death.
Yeah.
At some point, you've got to have good faith that people are going to use common sense. But we don't want engineless cars on the road. We don't want three cars parked on the, on the front lawn. And Tom mentioned a case about working on a race car or a project car in his garage, so the police can't go to your house and open up your garage. So, they can't do that. So I think that was the objective of this, that came through all of the input.
And this includes trailers, the trailers that are parked in people's front lawns?
Correct.
All over the city.
There is an exception, there's a couple that have cement pads.
Okay.
In their front yard. I don't know if there's, is there one in Charlaye, in that neighborhood? There were three trailers. Yeah, that's the one that comes to mind. I know there were the three trailers in your neighborhood, but.
That's on a different.
Correct, correct.
Which section is that? Because I thought it fell underneath.
This is mostly going after the cars parked on the front lawn.
My concern on this is, in the older part of town, a lot of the driveways are just single garages, they're not, they're single car driveways. And the owner.
Oh, here we go.
Has parked one car, you know, they're side by side, so one car is partially on the driveway, partially in the grass, like between the driveway and the fence, so that they're not parked on the street. That would be illegal under this, is that correct?
It's hard to envision without actually seeing it. I think I know what you're talking about. I had a similar thing with a trailer that I used to have years and years ago, and I extended it by putting gravel an extra five feet, and that met the requirement of having a driveway, so it was not parked on grass. There are several areas where the driveway consists of just dirt, going back to a garage, that I have seen. We're not going to go out and say that that's not a regular driveway, it provides access to a garage.
But if it has weeds.
If you have weeds that are up here anyway, you should get a citation.
Well, no, no, I'm talking about, it says here that if your driveway gravel or has weeds, it's two dash sixteen, it's citable.
Right.
So, current valid license or registration, are they not one in the same view? Can I, I can own a vehicle that's not registered, or not currently licensed, because that's still registered?
I think it's speaking to the same thing.
It is, it means the same thing.
Yes.
And if he can't see the plate, he can't walk back and look at it, can he?
No, he can't.
Like on my example of the third car back, where you wouldn't be able to see the plate, there isn't any reason for him to, anybody to walk back and just like if it's visible, or visibly not. You can see if it's on a motor or something.
Correct. I would imagine to address your, in a hypothetical situation, we would talk to the homeowner and ask them about that car, but no, we're not going to go on people's property and sneak under the bottom and inspect bins and things like that.
Chief's counsel, man, point though, let's say there's a group of cars, a few of the drivers in order, and if the gentleman that owns them registers and licenses them, he's got a piece of track land that's off the street, and some of it's paved, and some of it's gravel, which, if he goes through and just licenses vehicles, whether they're, you know, they have to be operated, because you have to.
Correct.
He has to.
Correct.
But then, he's good to go, he gets that three, four, or five cars out there.
Absolutely, absolutely, as well as a couple of project cars in his garage, and a race car.
And.
So it's not meant to win.
So I think, the reason I'm asking that question is because immediately, something you jump to, well, if I have four or five cars, and I own this property, and I'm trying to keep it up, you know, why are you trying to make me, you know, why are you citing me for having cars? I don't want to have that conversation. So the exemption is there, the exception is there, correct?
Yes.
So any of these folks could proactively go out and, you know, well, yeah, it was a project car, I have a license, six of them, put on the road, but I now need a license, or I need to be legal, and to your point, though, is functioning, comfortable?
Yeah, if it meets legal requirements of origin, and it's licensed.
That's what we're looking for.
Yes, sir.
One comment that I've heard that is the concern by property owners that their property value goes down if they're amongst a group of properties, or a one or two properties, whatever, that looks like a junkyard. And I'm thinking that the codes that we're trying to develop are to help people not think they're living in a junkyard neighborhood, where they can have their property and consider their property devalued or something. And I'm thinking that's the same thing on this. If, for example, around my house, for example, I've got a fence six feet high that you can't see through. So, I can probably have a messier backyard than some others that don't have a fence.
Possibly.
Is that what you hear, you believe that the city is looking for?
Well, my personal opinion aside, these are the information that we gathered from various stakeholders and neighborhood groups, that they wanted to enhance the livability of our city.
Was you agreeing with me there?
Yes.
Thank you.
So, and also disclaimer is that, well, I'll get to that in a minute. Go ahead, Your Honor.
Are you guys comfortable with it, where we can bring it back to the next council meeting and vote on it? Counselor McMahon? Counselor Milch?
We didn't discuss really the other two.
Not yet, we're just doing nuisances.
One is kind of a major change, well, it's in that section, the major change on the number of garage sales that people could have, but I do happen to think this is a good change, too.
Yeah, we've been talking about that for many years, many years. So are you okay with it, then, to bring it?
Yes.
Counselor Reisner?
No, I can't support it, no.
Okay, well, Counselor Tracy?
Yes, I'm reluctant on some of the items, but yes, we can bring it up.
Okay, Counselor Murshtro?
I'm okay for it.
Counselor Neath? Can I say yes? So we'll go ahead and bring that one back to the next council meeting for a vote. And the next item starts on page two twenty-five, traffic regulations. Discussion on this section?
Me, all right. I'd like to bring up something else that I wanted to do, so we've been talking to some of the businesses downtown who are feeling like they would like that two-hour parking zone in that area, and Director Whitehouse, I've talked to him directly, but I thought it was kind of time to bring it to the council, and it's hard with traffic, and, but one of the things that I just want to appeal to the council, one of the things that was brought forward by one of, one or two executive businesses, is that the four-hour parking, even though it's not really strictly enforced, gives them a disadvantage to the stop-by, to the drive-by type business activity that these businesses need to try.
And you're talking just on Portland Avenue?
Yeah, just actually, between, it's been too long, Dave, sorry, between Dartmouth and Arlington.
All right.
So, just as we were looking over this, I think that when we come back and talk, talk about what we're discussing here with traffic, but also just paying some attention to the fact that if we're trying to get that area to develop, going to a two-hour parking zone, we probably are really advantageous to the businesses, so we're trying to lure into the area, and bring into the area, and then have it. So I just want to bring it up as part of.
Okay. Okay, do we want to add it, potentially add it now, or do we want to see about adding it at the next council meeting?
Go ahead, sorry. Oh, I'm sorry.
I was running that through the traffic safety.
I think that's part, wasn't that a recommendation?
I don't know if it came up.
I thought it was.
I was hoping it had.
There was, well, there was, there wasn't, there was, but I can't remember what ended up being in the T S P.
I thought that was one of the recommendations.
In the downtown revitalization plan, the planning commission had recommended removing the section that recommended as part of a general change to reduce the minimum parking requirement. So that's a number of spaces that your prior business to have.
Right, but that's not the, right, that's.
But we went ahead and left that in, and as I remember, a lot of, part of the discussion was, all of those issues kind of need to be looked in a broader context of how you deal with parking. You know, you can't just handle it by changing minimums, and there was some recommendation from the downtown revitalization team that we go back and use some defined areas that had defined limited parking. But I think it's too complicated an issue to try to just do it in the context of these other things, too. I think it's something that needs to be given attention, and what happened, and your discussion is helpful, because you say there are certain types of business that benefit from certain types of parking limitations, and we don't know what types of business are going to choose to locate in our downtown, if it's restaurants versus industrial, or whatever else, you know. And we kind of need to see where that's going to go, and then know how best to respond to their needs that also serve the need of the community, and serve the needs of the residents nearby.
Well, I think we have, we're assuming it's going to be commercial, retail.
Right.
And I.
Yeah, it has to be.
I think Counselor Milch is correct, and he's looking at the much bigger picture. The question I have is, and I didn't really find an answer to it, was where did the four-hour zone come from, right? It's somewhere, right?
Been there forever.
Yeah.
I'd say, at least thirty-plus years.
Right, so the response back to that, that you have retail in there now, you know, you have three retail businesses, one opening up now, one that's left. They were the ones who were really appealing, and saying, wow, if we could get two-hour, at least, on the surface of things, somebody sees a two-hour, and they're not going to park there for seven or eight hours while they take a truck or bus to downtown. So I think that is what we're looking for, and if, you know, and I've talked to Director Whitehouse, and we're kind of scratching our heads, because we're not really sure why they, why couldn't switch to a two-hour zone in the interim, Counselor Milch, while we're developing the downtown. Nobody really had an answer for that, so it was thought that it was probably, we discussed it, and we continue to discuss on it, it's possibly, it was something like that. So it's complicated.
Could we bring this to the meeting, the next council meeting, and include that?
I'll do the background.
Okay.
Again, I think.
I should have that township book someone dropped off at my door. I think it's like from the early seventies, and it probably still has four hours in it. I'll bring it to the council meeting.
Well, again, I think that's something that would be appropriate to run through the traffic safety.
I agree.
I think it was already discussed.
Because we did that a year or so, a couple of years ago, over here at Gloucester and Portland, with some parking.
Well, we can ask them, but I'm pretty sure it was already discussed in length as part of the T S P. Very, and Chief Jolly's agreeing with me.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I.
So I wasn't there. So was it a reduction of times?
Linda Cosgrove was that time of lead, leading traffic safety when I first started and she, and there was heavy discussion on it.
Yep.
We can, let him do the comments.
Come on up.
Let me just say that traffic and safety tried bringing up the subject of parking on Portland Avenue, but it was felt that with the, with the.
You want to say, we, we only have this one microphone down there, so you got to speak loud.
And Linda Cosgrove, this came to traffic and safety before the master traffic plan began. And it was felt that we did not want to do anything that would interfere with that plan. And it was also felt that traffic and safety could do a review of the parking on Portland Avenue because in Milwaukee, in front of the coffee shops, they have fifteen-minute parking so people can stop and pick up their coffee and go. And businesses sometimes need to be treated individually.
Ah, okay.
So this could come before traffic and safety again.
Okay.
And we could just review the entire street.
Okay.
Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So that's an option, is to have traffic safety look at that four-block chunk and come back with the recommendation. So how do you guys feel about taking that piece and putting it back on their next agenda? And then we could look at the rest of it as, and potentially vote on it at the next council meeting?
I'm all for that. Going to traffic safety with that.
Everybody okay with that?
In the next month.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The twenty-fifth.
Counselor Merstrow, are you okay with that?
Yeah.
Counselor Neese?
Mm-hmm.
Counselor Milch?
Yes.
Counselor Reisner?
Yes.
Okay. So if we could get that put on the next traffic safety committee agenda, and it would be the Dartmouth to Arlington blocks, both sides to look at.
I think you should do, do it all the way down to Gloucester because there has been unhappiness regarding the Gloucester area.
I don't think it hurts.
Okay, so Gloucester down to Arlington. All right.
So I want to clarify that as is the traffic, section ten, chapter ten here, ten point oh four, this is to come back to the council?
Yes.
At the June, the next meeting, correct?
Yes.
But the parking, two-hour parking limit referred to the traffic safety at their next meeting?
Yep.
To come back to the council at a later date?
Recommendation, yes.
Okay.
What?
Well, I've got a concern, you keep saying at the next council meeting. We didn't have any public testimony on this.
The next council meeting would be the public hearing, I believe.
Right.
Would it be the public hearing?
In two weeks.
Yeah, we give a week's.
Right.
There'll be notice? That gives us plenty of time to notice it.
Well, there wasn't any notice to the planning commission being, addressing these issues. There wasn't anything in the city newsletter or.
Telling that we're talking about it in a work session?
Well, there was, there was one, there was one line in the, in the newsletter, this past newsletter, that we were going to have a work session on it.
Okay.
But I think we need to have this information in the newsletter and also on the website because it's been taken off the website twice in the last year.
Okay. This is our third meeting?
Right.
Where we've discussed these items, so people have had a lot of.
But, but a lot of those meetings had.
Opportunities.
But they haven't. We, we've scheduled them and then they got canceled or, and rescheduled over the last year.
Okay, I recall having quite a few people testify on these issues. What would you guys like to do? Would you like to postpone it another month so that we have plenty of time to put it in the newsletter and?
I'd be all right moving it to the meeting in July.
In July?
Would that work?
Yeah, please. Because this, we're, we're.
Well, I know, we've just been sitting on these for quite some time.
No, I agree.
And it's, it's time to start cleaning up and getting these things done.
And I have a lot of people that have been asking, when, when is the city council going to address these issues? As I've been, you know, around town and I, well, I don't know, and then all of a sudden we have the.
A work session and then a council meeting.
Yeah.
Okay. How would you guys feel about postponing until the July meeting?
Mayor, I'm fine with that. I think by that time, though, I would agree with you. I think we've gone through it a little bit.
Plenty of times, yes.
Yeah, I'm good with July.
Counselor Merstrow?
I am, July.
All right. Counselor McMahon, you already said, okay. Counselor Milch?
Yeah, I knew, I know that at the planning commission, there was no public testimony, but I was not aware that notice had not been given, that that was an opportunity for the public to weigh in on these. I just thought, no one showed any interest.
Right, because the planning commission allows people to come and testify on the agenda items, so they do have an opportunity to speak.
Yeah, it was, it was done as a public hearing.
Yes.
Only there was no public besides staff and members there to discuss it.
Okay, so I guess put it in the July meeting.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, next item is the membrane structure city ordinance.
Can we just talk about this? Yeah? Before we go first?
Oh, it's that that we were.
So I thought we were going to talk about.
I do realize that, sorry.
Talking about parking.
Oh, I thought we had already gone through it and that was.
No, no.
Okay, well, then let's keep talking about this.
We have one more deuce.
All right. So questions, concerns?
I mean, the trailer one.
What page is that on?
Two dash thirty-four.
Oh, okay, I didn't get, thank you.
I can, I think it's good. It's going to cause us some grief a little bit, I think, but I, I can see why if they're on the street and you can drive by some very nice ones and that are well-maintained and then you go around the corner and you drive by the one that's got the power cord going out to it and it's thirty years old with moss growing on it, so you can't have one without the other and you can't do the exception, so. So it's going to be potentially some, some heat. I think it's good.
Can I get some clarification? So when you read trailer here, you're talking about the kind of trailer that someone could live in as opposed to a trailer that you use to put something on?
I'd say the trailer is anything that's towed, yes.
Okay.
So tanning from a jet ski trailer that's hardly anything to a fifth-wheel trailer.
Okay, okay.
And a construction trailer that's locked in Glen Echo also qualified.
Not to be too specific.
Not to be too specific.
And is that a trailer, is that correct, counsel? A trailer is anything that's towed? We assume that?
That's our understanding.
Okay.
Okay, good. That helps because I'm, I was picturing just these little flat things with two wheels.
I think anything that's towed is a trailer.
Okay.
Let me talk about the exception, the camping trailer.
Any other discussion on ten?
Yeah, you can add a definition.
I was the other day, I had a forty-foot motor van sitting out there.
Well, we'd move in. Yeah, I was in that one. Um, I'm sure you guys know what it is. What about living in your trailer that's parked in your driveway? That's something in here, too, isn't it?
It is.
I thought we already had something to cover.
But that's already, that's already been, yeah, adopted.
It should permit that, I know that it's a specific condition.
But it's for a very specific period of time and only under hardship.
The problem is, and of course, without having the law in place and.
Right.
Then you, we have a neighbor who lives in there off and on and of course, he's got his, you know, lawn chair out there and stuff. He shows up for a couple, three or four weeks. You've seen pictures of it.
Yes, sir.
He shows up with a semi-tractor and parks it out in front of the residential area.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm just saying that it's already in the book, but it, it was out some way to give law enforcement ability to, and then, you know, go out and give them the warning, which is the important part, kind of to ever permit. And if they don't, then they can do the follow-up, which is what is not happening now.
Right, right. Well, and I understand that the need for housing is horrible. I spent, I go to at least one meeting a week that has to do with that, but living in trailers in people's driveways, I just don't think it's the right choice when there's no sanitary hookups or anything. Okay, any other discussion on ten? You go, okay, then with bringing it forward to the July meeting? Yes, okay. So now we can move on to the last one, which is membrane structures. Ooh, there's a picture of the construction trailer. That's there, other votes. Okay, membrane structures. I know there'll be discussions on this one. Counselor Reisner? Huh? We're on sixty-eight. Counselor Reisner?
Though I still disagree. I mean, with banning them outright, I think that it's not fair to, people that live in this part of town that can't have a garage because of the way lots have been divided up over the last, you know, hundred-plus years and how, how different houses were, were built. For example, I can't have a garage and I don't have a cover over my, my vehicle. If I did, it would be something like this because I end up having to share a driveway with, with a neighbor. And there's a lot of other residents, so I think that rather than just banning them, require that they maintain them. I, I do agree that having a, a structure with two or three colored, different colored carts that are, you know, flopping in the wind, half-torn, is, is unsightly and I wouldn't want a neighbor with one of those.
I don't think, I don't think the regulations ban them, unless you live in the kind of a house that's, as you described, my daughter and son-in-law live in a similar kind of a house. Long driveway, no garage, and the front line of the house is, you know, goes across the whole length of the property. So there's nothing that they could put in the front of the house to put a car under that would, that would pass this regulation because it doesn't go behind. But there are homes that do have a driveway that extends past the front of the house who could have a membrane structure and follow these rules and still use it. So it doesn't technically ban it for everybody, but there are certain types of structures of, of homes that would, you know, you'd not be able to comply with this at all with one of those structures. Go ahead.
Well, I read B saying it should not be visible from the budding right-of-way when viewed at pedestrian level, which would be from the front of the driveway. You would be able to view a membrane structure.
Yeah, I guess I was thinking backyard maybe would be okay, but.
And then, you know, actually, I know there's one over here behind the high school where it's on a corner. They have it behind their house, but there's a, I can't even remember the name of the street that goes on, on past.
Oh, so you can see it from the side easily?
Right.
Yeah.
But it's in the back.
Yeah.
And.
Okay.
So.
Well, we could, we could strike B then because I, I kind of agree that as long as you're behind the front building line, I'd be all right with that. And I don't know if there, is there a way to put in there properly maintained that's enforceable at all?
Yeah.
Because I think that's part of the issue also is some of these pictures clearly show it, that they're, they're just raggedy, haven't been taken care of, but how do you, who determines that, right? That's the question, that's the main, the main question.
And then what do they put under it? Because there's more and more people that are using it as another storage room and there's boxes and junk all over.
Well, but we have, we have ordinances that cover that.
But it's not being enforced because I see it all the time.
That's something you'd have to talk to the citizens about.
Okay, but we already have, okay, as long as we have that covered, I will start sending some addresses now.
Is there anything that's working up to anchor those membrane buildings down? I live on a corner, I have a corner behind me. He just port gravel on one side of his house. He's got a couple of garages on the left side. I have cars, trailers, motors, car, car, motorcycle. The other side, he just port gravel drives over the curb, parking, parking boat, there's a car there. Put a membrane up there and this last letter, it was on my deck. I have a windshield.
Yeah, you need to talk to the owner.
So I just think maybe when you go to the maintenance, someone includes anchoring down, so it's not a hazard to people in the neighborhood because they do flush. It's true. Why, well.
Well, yeah, I think the maintenance piece is the biggest issue in this one.
I remember reading some minutes from quite a few years ago when these structures first were being sold to places like Home Depot and, and comments in the city council at that time were that they needed to comply with whatever setback rules the property had. So basically, it becomes a garage, you'd have to position it where, where a garage could legally be placed.
Which is twenty feet here.
And if you have a, you know, whatever, it's five foot or ten foot from the edge of the property and all of a sudden you're, you're in that space with one of these things, then you could, you know, you wouldn't have, you wouldn't pass setback rules on building code and therefore, you know, you, you can't have it even if it's just a temporary thing. And that sounds a little bit like what you're saying. Somebody creating a sort of makeshift garage where you wouldn't be allowed to build a garage because you'd never get a permit for it, but because you can just, you know, buy it at Home Depot and put it up there, you say, you think it's okay, but now I don't know who has to be the one to enforce those rules if we have to have county coming out and enforcing that?
Sean.
Or is it still Sean? Sean would still do it?
Well, that's just it.
If it be under building code, then it would be the county.
County.
That would actually, that'd probably be the development code, though.
Yes.
So the city would have the ability to enforce that.
But we, we contract with the county.
I know, but for the billing codes, but for the development code.
For land use.
For land, which is land use, yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's with the county.
Well, but it's our land use code, it's not.
Well, no, no, I know that, but still, we haven't had land use code enforced in the city since Jonathan Block lived.
And he did it.
Twelve years ago.
Yeah, he did it himself.
And that's because that was one of his passions.
Yes.
Was land use.
He loved sending letters to people.
So, so I, I like Counselor Milch's take on this because it brings it down to, if you can't, if it can't be a permanent footprint, you can't do a temporary footprint. These are not temporary structures, let's be honest about that. So if it's not a permanent footprint, if it's not feasible or not legal for a permanent footprint, it shouldn't be legal for its temporary footprint. And I think, I mean, I think City Attorney is right, I think we can still enforce that, right? I mean, if I started building a garage and a half of it was out in the middle of the street, would the chief not have the authority to come and say to me, you're violating the development?
Yeah, we have the ability to enforce the development code.
Right, so we, we can do that, can we not?
Yep. So the, the key would be making sure, and I am not familiar enough with your development code, to say what is required for the setback. So, you know, you want to make sure that if necessary, the planning commission goes through the process of amending the development code to cover these types of structures because it may be that the development code actually doesn't go this far to reach these type of structures.
You would respect that planning.
And enforce it at the city level. And I think that it, it completely gets rid of the pushback where you're just picking on me because I can't have a garage. Well, you may not be able to have a garage, right? This is, this is part of the property that you own, may not have the footprint, legal footprint for a garage.
You wouldn't be able to develop it anyway. I, I just see that as a more logical way of approaching this than having those citizens feeling worried, picking on it because their membrane structure was different than another one, I'm sorry.
And I think also that takes care of the membrane structures in the front yards.
Right.
Because it would not be permitted to put, so if we could put something in there that defines a membrane structure as somehow along the same lines of, as where it would be, like you were saying, a permanent structure, or membrane structure can only go where a permanent structure would be permitted.
Is allowed.
Yeah.
And we already have setbacks in place, so, I mean, that's already defined. Yes.
So, Your Honor, that leads back to my disclaimer and that I should have said upfront is that I always advocate that the entire code needs revisited. It's twenty-plus years old, has not been modified in significant portions. We're trying to reestablish a better relationship with the county and get them communicating better with our code person. They have a new planner. She's much more engaged, but there's still a lot of those gray areas and rough patches. Who enforces what? Who sends out the letter? And it's, it's almost like you would think we're some huge government organization when there's three stakeholders that are, should be talking, it should be quick and lean. But I think a big portion of it is this entire body of code is antiquated. And these little patchwork things are only going to get us so far.
Well, do you want a committee? Do you want us to form a committee?
Well, we applied for a grant, didn't we? Yeah.
Smart growth, that's for land use. That's not...
Isn't that what they, when that...
Well, that, that might fall under land use, but there's municipal code, there's a lot, you're talking municipal codes, the whole...
Land use, everything.
Everything, yeah.
Needs revisited.
Yeah, the land use and planning.
Twenty-five.
Do it tonight.
We didn't apply for this type of time for that grant.
Well, that's a wonder. They just talked about recently that Melissa's going to help them get a Metro grant and so...
It's a DLCD.
Oh, that's right.
It's a state one.
It's just LCD, yeah, the state grant. But they push smart growth, so whoever's on planning be prepared because that's what it's all based around. That's why you get the money. I like it, but not everybody does. All right. So on this one, then, do we want to refer it back to Planning Commission to look at our setbacks and to massage it so that it complies with codes that we already have in place?
Do you, under Exhibit A, at the very end there, there are some, this came from Melissa, based on the Planning Commission discussion?
Yeah, that's right.
I would just send all of this back to planning because it sounds like we, it's going to be different than what she has as recommendations in the back. So particulars?
Particulars, you're wanting setbacks?
We want, yeah, we want to see what they can do with it in regards to compliance with our existing setbacks.
And to somehow make a membrane structure be classified or described as only going where a permitted building could go.
Yes.
Something I wanted to add on.
Where a permanent building could be permitted.
Hard skate, hard skate, yeah.
I guess I'm naive about that because I, when you said flying everywhere, it really surprised me because I would think if you're going to have that particular type of a structure, you would want that kind of down or hold because that's the purpose of what it's being used for.
You would say, yeah, you would say.
I can announce that you fly.
Yeah. They can fly.
And you fall down also.
All right.
I would think.
I'm sorry. Okay. Do we have anything else for the work session?
As far as sending that back, could our, our county planner give us a little help with language that would do what we've suggested so that we might be able to get it back by July and...
She goes to the Planning Commission meeting, so she'll be in the loop on this one?
She does, but she can only deal with anything that has to do with Title seventeen, not anything to do with the municipal code itself. So that's why these are separate, the Title seventeen suggestions.
She's only doing Title seventeen?
She can only do, help us with the Title seventeen, not the municipal code portion.
Well, but this kind of falls into...
Well, that's where she's suggesting that the membrane structure, you know...
Yeah, this goes into zone. It's a, it would fall under the zones because we're looking at adding this as what, a condition under residential...
But in the first part, it's looking to add new code proposal to chapter eight point oh four at the very beginning.
I think because we're considering this a hard structure, that it really needs to be in land use.
Well, if you look at Attachment A, they have proposed amendments to the zoning code that mirrors the amendments in eight point oh four.
Okay, so that is Title seventeen, okay. So she's saying put it in both.
Right. And so if you want to deal with the setbacks, then you're going to ask them to go back and look at the amendments that they proposed to the zoning code?
Right.
To also include setbacks and then focus on language that mirrors prohibitions on existing permanent structures.
And you, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Counselor.
You mirrored both, the code and the zoning code, right?
Yes.